Tucksbury, welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting of May 2, 2024. The first order of business is going to be move into executive session to discuss collective bargaining. We will be back after that session is adjourned. We will move into a regular session. Can I have a motion to move into executive session?
Second.
Made by Mr. Mackey, second by Mr. -- Mrs. Wellman. This is a roll call vote. Mr. Ryder, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Ms. Wellman?
Yes.
And the chair votes aye as well. So we're now in executive session. Welcome to our regular session for May 2, 2024. First item on the agenda, we're going to table Article 5, correct?
I'm just going to wait, I think. Mr. Chairman.
What's that?
We're just going to wait and see if anything evolves before town meeting. Article 5, yep.
Okay, Mr. Kratman, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Okay. So let's just get into it. So we have Article 6 is the contract, correct, for the police department?
Yes.
Yes, the first.
Go ahead.
First article, Article 5 is on hold still. Article 6 is the contract for the Superior Officers Union. We have reached an agreement with the Superior Officers, and we will be amending this article at town meeting to reflect the amount of money needed for the first year cost. The amendment will strike the word "money." Where currently the article reads to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate sum of money needed to fund and implement the collective bargaining agreement. We're going to strike the word "money" and in its place insert $86,862. The contract is a three-year contract. It -- the highlights are a 2.5% salary increase for each of the three years, a 1% increase in the first year for post-certification, a 1% increase to the base pay for post-certification in the second year, and a 2% increase in the third year. Juneteenth was also added as a holiday. The second year of the contract will cost $81,800. The third year of the contract is projected to cost $109,307, for a three-year cost of $277,968. And I would recommend the board approve the article.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Wellman.
I'll make a motion for the board to recommend adoption of Article 6 for the collective bargaining agreement between the town and the Tucksbury Police Department Superior Officers.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Ryder. We're going to do a roll call vote since Mr. Krassman is remote on the phone and Mr. Ryder is remote on the television set. Mr. Ryder, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Okay, and the chair also votes aye. That's a 5-0 vote to recommend adoption. Montori.
The next is Article -- Article 7 is on hold. Article 8 is the next article. This is also a collective bargaining agreement that we've reached an agreement with the AFSMI Union. This article will be amended, striking out the word "money" and in its place adding -- to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $129,283, of which $85,339 will be raised from the tax levy, $7,713 raised from sewer rates, and $13,231 raised from water rates. This is, again, for the AFSMI Union, which includes DPW employees, facilities and grounds employees, all of the clerical union, as well as dispatchers and library personnel. The second year of the contract is projected to cost -- before I go to that, the highlights of the contract are a three-year agreement with a cost of living increase of 2.5% in each of the three years of the contract, an increase in longevity in the amount of $300 in the first year, $200 in the second, $200 in the third for those employees at each level. Clothing allowance for the DPW will increase $85 in the first year, $75 in the second year, and an additional personal day was added. It was increased from two to three. The projected second year cost of the contract is $122,856. The third year is projected to cost $121,433, with a total three-year contract cost of $373,572. The AFSMI contract also includes the regional dispatch employees, the dispatchers, but their funds are not raised within this article. They're taken care of separately within their assessment. And that is it.
Any questions, Mr. Ryder?
No, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Mr. Kratman? Mr. Mackey?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Wellman?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
And the chair has no questions. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to recommend adoption of Article 8.
Motion made by Mr. Mackey.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Ryder. We'll still do a roll call vote. Ms. Wellman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Ryder, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. What are we up to now, Mr. Montori?
We're up to the community preservation articles. Article.
Before we begin the community, we had a meeting on Tuesday night, and all the articles were approved by the members, Article 21, 22, 23, and I think 25, if I remember right. They're all approved by the committee, so everybody knows. On Article 1 -- Article 21, any questions?
No.
Hearing none. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to recommend adoption of Article 21.
Motion made by Ms. Wellman and seconded by Mr. Mackey? Or Mr. Kratman? Mr. Kratman, seconded the motion. Mr. Ryder, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Article 21 is recommended for adoption. Article 22, any questions?
No.
Hearing none.
Make a motion to adopt Article 22.
Kratman made the motion to adopt Article 22. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Ryder. Ms. Wellman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
And chair votes aye as well. That's a 5-0 vote to recommend adoption of Article 22. Article 23, any questions? Hearing none. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to recommend adoption of Article 23.
Motion to recommend adoption made by Ms. Wellman.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Mackey. Mr. Ryder, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
And chair votes aye as well. That's a 5-0 vote to recommend adoption. Now we're up to Article 26. Any questions on Article 26?
If I can, Mr. Chairman, if you want to go through.
Oh, it's Article 25, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. Article 26, go ahead. This is just -- I thought you were on just one.
Article 25, I'm sorry. Any questions on Article 25? Hearing none. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to adopt Article 25.
Motion made to adopt Article 25 made by Mr. Kratman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Wellman, seconded the motion. Okay, roll call vote. Ms. Wellman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman? Mr. Kratman, how do you vote? Mr. Ryder, how do you vote?
Aye.
And chair votes aye as well. Article 21, 25 is recommended for adoption. Okay, Mr. Montori, you're on to.
Article 36.
Article 36.
Yeah, it was, when the board voted it, it was, they voted an amended article, but it's changed since. The original article had a total amount of funds to be raised of $162,043. That amount has been reduced to $157,666. The original, the article the board voted had $150,877 being raised from the tax levy. That amount is $145,900. The article that the board voted had $4,947 being raised from water rates. The new amount is $5,247. And the amount being raised from cable, the original amount that the board voted was $6,218. It's going to be $6,519. The other change was, in the amendment the board voted, it was a $150 increase for longevity in each of the three years. The new amendment has it being consistent with what the AFSMI contract has, which is 300 in the first year, 200 in the second year, and 200 in the third year. The other addition was, nope, that was it. Those, those are all the additions. What changes?
Any questions from any board members? Ms. Wellman?
No.
Mr. Mackey.
Just one comment, Mr. Chairman. Through to the town manager, I appreciate you going back and updating this to make sure that it's commensurate with the AFSMI, so everyone's on an even playing field. Thank you.
Mr. Kratman.
I have no questions.
Mr. Ryder.
No questions.
And the chair has no question. What is the pleasure of the board on Article 36?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to recommend adoption of Article 36.
We have a recommendation for adoption made by.
As amended, thank you.
As amended by Mr. Mackey.
I'll second that.
And was seconded by Mr. Kratman. Mr. Ryder, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Mackey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. And is that the end of our?
That's all, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, motion to adjourn made by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Mr. Mackey. Mr. Ryder, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman.
Aye.
Mr. Mackey.
Aye.
Ms. Wellman.
Aye.
And chair votes aye as well. We'll see you all at town meeting on Monday evening, and good night, Tewksbury.